So you should see that on your end hopefully soon. I think it takes a couple of seconds usually, quite a few. Are we actually streaming? Yes. Okay, just making sure that Webex shows the stream. It does.
I also follow us on our YouTube page, just so that way I can check from like, you know, my perspective to make sure things work.
Make sure everything's showing good everywhere.
Yep, it's saying it's live, which is good.
That's good.
Yep, so, okay, we're good to go. And then, um, when Paul joins, um, he'll need to be able to present. So he'll need the PowerPoint.
Sounds good. And do you want me to just listen for roll call or like the calling the meeting session and go, uh, start the recording?
Yeah, I would say they're supposed to start at six. Um, so I would say just when you get six o'clock.
Go ahead and start it.
Go ahead and start it. Um, that would be my recommendation.
Sounds great.
Alright, thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
Hi Todd, hi Paula. Um, just to let you know, we were having some issues with live streaming, so we are technically live. So just a heads up for you guys. Hey Paul, um, we were having some issues with the live stream with YouTube. We got it to work, but we are live, so just a heads up for you.
Okay.
Can everybody see the PowerPoint? Okay? Or is it?
Yes, sir. Looks good.
Okay, looks weird on my end, but as long as it works for you.
Well, as long as it says the Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting will begin soon. That's what I see.
Alright.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to go outside today? I hope so.
Not enough.
Not enough.
You know, we got all week, right?
There you go.
Supposed to be nice all week.
A lot of melting today.
I've got six o'clock. Uh, Mr. Taylor, if we want to go ahead and get started, I don't know if, uh, Commissioner Bedell responded to the email saying he's going to attend or not.
That's fine. We'll just go ahead and go. Um, okay. Let's, uh, open a meeting, the Planning Commission, Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting. And what do we have on our agenda, Paul?
Uh, so the first.
Real quick, Paula, we have to do a roll call.
Take roll, that's right.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Bedell? Not here. You have a quorum.
Very good. So everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes, uh, from January twenty-seventh? I can take that as a yes. Okay. If everybody's had a chance to read them, could, uh, I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay? Eyes have it. Okay, new business, preliminary policy prioritization.
Uh, yeah, so we'll try and make this, uh, quick. Um, a lot of this is, a lot of this is sort of a preview for what we'll be discussing at the Steering Committee meeting on Thursday. Um, so hopefully you'll be able to attend that. Um, but essentially what we've been doing, um, in the department since, as it relates to SCLCO twenty-fifty, since, since November and really the closing of the online version of the open houses is really sort of synthesizing all the information we've heard from all the engagement we've done and, and the feedback we received at the open houses and really sort of, uh, ident- identify, trying to identify which policies and recommendations should be prioritized. Um, and sort of, uh, what, what estimated impact could they have? So we, at the, if you'll recall at the open houses, we showed probably like, I don't know, six, fifteen to twenty, I can't remember the exact number. Um, where we had sort of a top fifteen and then, and then each sort of theme bucket went into more detail. Um, with like the top eight-ish or so in each bucket. Well, what we've been looking at is, is everything that we've come up with so far. So even more, uh, recommendations than what we had previously sort of shared initial, initially, um, sorted them all into which bucket is, which theme, uh, is this recommendation going to have the most impact in? Um, recognizing that a lot of these, um, and by, by design intentionally have impact across multiple, uh, topic areas. Um, and that's really, uh, the intent to try and maximize the co-benefits of, of each decision we make because we have limited resources available to us, right? Um, and so we, we tried to identify where, what bucket does this, does this specific recommendation uh, most closely fit with? Um, and then we looked at sort of the, the five key issues or challenges that we've been talking about during this process that we sort of uncovered as we were doing engagement and the existing conditions report, you know, population stagnation, job skills mismatch, housing diversity and affordability, infrastructure cost burden, social environmental, environmental resilience and tried to determine which recommendation or, or if, for any given recommendation, which of these sort of key issues or challenges, questions that we're trying to solve? Um, does this have an impact on and sort of, um, uh, and it could be across multiple. It could have only an impact on housing diversity or it can have a, an impact on, on two or three of these um, issues and trying to sort of get an aggregate score to, to see, um, which topic areas, uh, these would have an, an impact on. Um, and then the, the third sort of criteria we looked at, um, I don't know if it's on here, it's, you know, you all should have received this Excel file that this is a screenshot of that we're looking at, um, that has these recommendations in them, sort of in preparation for the Steering Committee meeting. Um, if you haven't looked at it yet, I would highly recommend that you do so. Um, the third is just sort of this general, generalized planning topic area, which is the more traditional breakdown of how comp plans are set up, you know, a housing chapter, an economic development chapter, transportation infrastructure, so on and so on. And just to kind of rank these different, um, uh, recommendations and, and kind of see which ones kind of come to the top. And then the last sort of thing that we looked at was equity and sustainability, which is sort of the through line from, uh, for our planning project, right? It's SCLCO twenty fifty and equitable and sustainable comprehensive plan. Um, so, you know, describing what the equity or sustainability impact would be. Um, and, and ranking them those ways. Uh, and so what we're asking the Steering Committee to do, and you all, if you are able to attend, is have really sort of detailed discussions about these recommendations, looking at the recommendation itself, but also the ideas that we've generated around timeline, how long is it going to take for a specific recommendation to be implemented? And are we on target? Or do we think it'll, it could be done quicker? Could it, is it possibly going to take longer? Um, you know, estimated cost, which is, you know, there's so many variables that go into that. Um, but, you know, are we on track on that? You know, if we need, if it's not something we're currently doing and we need to start doing this and we need new funding sources for it, what could those look like? Um, and then really the, a large one is that we're asking the Steering Committee to help us with is identifying sort of partnerships, implementation partners, because the county, we recognize we have limited resources. We can't do all of this on our own. We need support from, um, business leaders, um, that, you know, the community leaders, nonprofits, all types of folks to help identify, uh, ways that they can support us in reaching our goals and ways that the county can support them in reaching their goals and sort of who needs to take the lead on, on certain, um, projects or not. And then that's sort of ties into, um, you know, something Todd and I talked about and, um, you know, we're going to be going in, in late March to talk to the folks at Spire about twenty fifty and, and, um, sort of what we're trying to achieve with it and what, you know, the ways that Spire can, can contribute to the comp plan success and, and moving the region forward. Um, and how the county can support, uh, you know, Spire and, and achieving its goals. Um, and so as we're identifying these implementation partners, uh, which a lot of them we have identified, we just sort of want to make sure we're not missing somebody. Um, we're going to be, you know, having conversations with them, uh, throughout March to really sort of start drafting this, you know, the implementation strategy, um, of the comp plan and say, um, you know, these, these are the things that we're going to be doing year one. These are things we're going to be doing year five. Um, you know, these are funding sources. This is who should be doing what, um, to really have, uh, a good idea of, of how we can not just create a plan that sits on the shelf, which is unfortunate, what happens a lot, right? It can, it can be hard to, to move these things forward and for us, I think we recognize that, um, the county can't and the region really can't, um, afford to do that anymore. We, you know, what, the way we currently operate isn't really working anymore. Um, and so we really need to be serious about how we, um, move this plan forward and, and start implementing things. Um, so that's really, uh, what we've been up to since we last talked. Um, and we'll be discussing a lot of this in, in a lot more detail eh, on Thursday. So if you're able to attend, please do. It, it is a virtual meeting at ten AM. Um, but also if you have questions or want to talk about anything, um, you know, related to recommendations, feel free to reach out. Uh, be happy to, to chat about those. Um, you should have received an email with the, the sort of Excel sheet that has all the recommendations sort of broken down. Um, if you didn't, let me know and I can make sure you get that. Um, but we're excited to, to sort of take the next step forward into, um, you know, drafting the plan document and getting it out in the public to, to look at and review and get implementation strategies sort of hardened and then move the plan forward towards adoption, uh, early this summer. Um, so before I talk, I mean, I guess I talked about the Steering Committee a little bit, um, which will be this Thursday. Um, and yeah, we'll be going into breakout groups. So we're asking the Steering Committee members, because we recognize we, we're giving them a lot of information to try and focus on, um, just one of the, the buckets. And so we've sort of pre-sorted folks into, um, topics or themes that we think they have, uh, particular strengths in. Uh, but we also encourage folks to look at, to look at all of it as, as they're able to uh, and provide feedback that way. Um, and then sort of coming out of the Steering Committee, uh, meeting, helping us identify who those implementation partners are that we need to be talking to over the next month and month or two, uh, to make sure we can, um, sort of get, get a, a really robust implementation strategy, um, put together. Um, so those, that's really the, the update I have for you. Um, I'll take questions. Um, if anything needs to be clarified or, or, um,
Question.
Whatever you guys want to talk about. Yes.
Did you mention, or you said that you guys, um, have come up with the previous slide, I think it said that you guys already kind of came up with, um, ideas or a plan of the staff determined that each policy recommendation, um, have you guys shown us any of those? Like give us an example. You said you're going to break the groups into, or break the?
Here, let me, let me share the, the Excel file instead, um, and see how that goes. I think that might be, uh, helpful. Uh, because these are, these are sort of initial, these are really just ideas that we've come up with internally so far. Um,
I'm curious what each group is going to be presented with, like what kind of information are they going to see to discuss?
Yeah. Okay, so we have this, um, this first, first worksheet, um, kind of explains, uh, what you're looking at and sort of what each, uh, um, what each column is and, and sort of explains it a little bit, uh, sort of a data dictionary. Um, and then we're only going to be discussing in the breakout groups, inclusive economies, the complete communities and the sustainable infrastructure recommendations, uh, just based on, you know, size of, and, and of the, you know, number of attendees and trying to make sure that we have good discussions. Um, so if you, like if, if you were assigned the, to look at, I think we asked you, uh, Paula, to look at sustainable infrastructure recommendations. So we would ask you to, to be more familiar with these than the others. Um, and the, the ones that are highlighted here are sort of like the top ten um, in, in our sort of ranking system. And so it, it has the specific policy or program or tool or, or recommendation that we're looking at, who the lead partners are, who's supporting partners might be. Um, how long we think, uh, it would take to implement the, like to reach full implementation? Um, how much does it cost? Um, you know, what type of recommendation is it? Where could funding come from? Um, all the, all these types of things and it, and it keeps going, right? Into which, um, you know, where could, uh, you know, what's the equity impact? Uh, what's, what's the sustainability impact? Which of the themes or, or topic areas does it relate to? Um, so really you're just, we're asking you to, to look at all of this and say, yeah, this, this idea about, um, you know, develop, develop design guidelines for small lots, single family homes and attached homes, right? Um, you know, does it make?
What's it gonna do is the city next to, on that row?
Yeah, I'm not sure why it says that. So I can, I can get that, well, we'll make sure that gets fixed, but.
Have you seen this spreadsheet already?
I'm sorry?
Should I have already been familiar with this spreadsheet?
Uh, it was sent to you on Friday, I think.
Right. I apologize, I have not.
No, that's okay.
Had a chance to open it yet.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Um, but generally we're just asking, you know, do, do these, um, do our initial ideas about how these recommendations, uh, get implemented make sense? And also do, do we think these recommendations in general make sense or not? Or, um, is it, uh, not going to help move the needle on some of these, uh, issues that we're trying to tackle, right? Um, or is it too difficult to, to achieve those types of, those, uh, those types of questions are really what we're trying, trying to, to answer. You know, we have a question about, you know, adopting universal design, right? How can we encourage, um, builders to, to implement universal design concepts, um, uh, in, into their plans? Um, who should be involved in that? How long would it take? Um, those types of things, right? So, um, we would ask in, in the email you receive that has this, uh, spreadsheet should, um, identify which of the, the buckets we're asking you to look at, um, in more detail. Um, so, because it is a lot.
From you? Did this email come from you on Friday?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay, I got it.
If you didn't get it, let me know and I'll make sure you get it.
Email, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I'm sorry, I just noticed the pre-work and prepare. I did scan the, uh, the email, but I didn't open the attachment.
No, no, that's okay. Yeah. Um, that's the one. So, um, but if you want to talk about it, we, you know, we can certainly do that in advance of the, the discussion on Thursday or even afterwards. Um, but yeah, it's a lot. So we're not asking everyone to, to be familiar with, with all of them. Um, because it's even within just, you know, one bucket, there's, there could be, you know, fifty plus recommendations. So, um, it is, we understand it's a lot to, to look at and um, really just do, do the best you can. And, and if there's particular things that do you want to really just like identify what are some things that you want to talk about or bring up? Um, either that we've missed or that you think needs more attention than, um, what we're giving it, um, is really what we're asking for, because it's, it's only going to be about a thirty minute discussion. Um, so it's, you know, we have a couple of other things we need to talk about during the meeting, but, and we can't hold people all day, as much as we might, might want to. Um, so yeah, that's, uh, that's what we'll be doing, um, on Thursday, uh, and then moving forward, um, over the next, um, month or two as we try and um, move towards adoption with, with the plan. Um, I will share that we have, uh, we're going to be our next, our, our sort of last public, uh, engagement event. We're going to do open houses again, um, in late April. Um, so we're still finalizing some details around that. So we'll be sure to, to let you all know about, about what those look like, but that's where we'll be sharing the draft plan document with the public, um, and soliciting feedback on, on that. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think that's all, all the updates I have for today.
Well, Paul, I got a, just a question. It might lead me to another question. In the Steering Committee, I've, I've had a couple of meetings and um, how many of the members of the Steering Committee, uh, have attended the majority of the meetings? And what parts of the community or the, of the county are they? what parts of the community are the, of the county? Are they? How many are from unincorporated? How many are from incorporated? And, and is it North County, South County, West County, spread all over it equally?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
That's a lot of questions to ask, but I mean, it, yeah. So you can look at, when we look at this spreadsheet, maybe we can understand why certain things are directed to certain parts of our county.
Yeah, so I would say the majority of the Steering Committee members have have, have been really involved in attending the meetings and, and following up and requesting, you know, additional information and, and for us to come and talk to, to groups that they're involved with. I would say we didn't necessarily look at the sort of geographic breakdown of Steering Committee members. We were looking more at what sort of industry sector they've represented. So we wanted to make sure we had folks that were, that worked in housing, folks that worked in transportation, folks that worked on, you know, open space and environment and sustainability, folks that were, you know, worked in real estate development and, and banking and, and finance. Some.
You do have representation from different areas?
Yeah, to make sure we have a, a wide variety of, of folks that can draw on a, a sort of a breadth of knowledge and experience. And we did look to have a, a diverse Steering Committee as well to make sure that, you know, that men and women were represented and that's racially diverse to, to represent.
Regionally too, you did have some representation from different parts.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I would say that was where people live or work within the county was, was less of a concern, but we did consider that as well. Yeah.
We just have to have some representation from each area, I would say.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. There helps. Todd, do you have any questions, Paul, anymore? Chris, I see you out there. Chris, you got any questions?
Chris took his mute off, but I couldn't hear him.
No, I couldn't either. Okay. Anything good to the order?
The only thing I have is the, the next Planning Commission Comprehensive Planning Committee meeting will be a month from now, March twenty fourth. And so we'll have, you know, more information at that time about our public engagement events in, in April. We're about ready to start advertising for those. We'll have information there. We'll have talked about, we'll talk, we'll do a recap of what we talked about at the Steering Committee meeting and, and sort of next steps as we move towards getting the plan adopted.
I'm unavailable that night.
Okay.
Has, has everybody been receiving? I mean, I received a whole lot of WebEx invitations. Has everybody else received those? And then how, there's Chris, Chris said yes.
Yeah, we, we got a.
How easy was it to log in tonight?
It was really easy tonight.
Okay. All right.
I think it's hard if I try on my phone. Sometimes I have more issue.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know. Tonight I used my computer and it was fine. I did get a bunch of extra WebEx invites, some for the day that they were sent out. Like say they were sent out yesterday. I got some for, they would have been sent out for last night. I'm like, why am I getting notifications for the same day? There was like, it was, it was a random like Tuesday night or went Thursday night. I'm like, I don't think there's a meeting, but I was getting extra WebEx invites.
There was like three or four of them on Valentine's Day on the fourteenth.
Yes, that's what it was. It was a Friday night. I'm like, I'm sure we don't have meetings Friday night.
Yeah, I think that one might have been just an, a whoops. Yeah, so how it works, like, you know, Bennett will put in IT tickets and then an IT person have to go in and manually enter each one of your guys' meetings in. So, you know, sometimes fingers, you know, you know, glide over the keyboards a little differently than they're supposed to. So I think that the individual from IT and Bennett have been talking. And so I think that's why you were going to see it. From my understanding too, like typically you'll see, you know, Bennett sent out, I think, you know, some, some like just calendar blocking dates. And then you guys might have seen an actual WebEx one with all your WebEx information. And then typically WebEx will alert you guys about thirty minutes to an hour before your meetings, just to let you know that you're a panelist for your meetings. So that's usually the three that you'll kind of see consecutively. Sometimes there's one after as well, from what I recall. So that might be why you guys were getting one, that's why you guys were getting spammed with all of them because we got you guys scheduled for the entire year.
It's great, but I have to put it in my calendar.
Yeah, that's why you guys were getting so many.
Did everybody re, uh, receive one from WebEx this, this evening? I didn't.
Yeah, I always say that they come in while I'm in the middle of the meeting for me, just through our county servers. And I'm like, okay, that's great. So it just kind of depends on each individual email, I feel like. But as long as you have the initial, like the original one inviting you and it's on your calendar, that's really the only one you need. Anything else is just kind of secondary information for you.
Thanks, Gretchen. Anybody else have anything? Okay, if not, I'd like to have a motion for adjournment? There's a second. There've been a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Nays? Eyes have it. And we will see you folks in a couple of weeks at our Executive Board meeting.
All right, thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thanks, Paul. We'll see you Thursday, everybody. See everybody Thursday. Thank you. Bye.